I call the December Goodyear Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. If you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the Commission Secretary please note that all members of the Commission are present this evening? Wow, it's been awhile. Are there any additions or modifications to the meeting minutes as distributed? If not, I will take Commission action for approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion from Commissioner Peters?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Hamilton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Public comments. Is there any member of the public who would wish to speak on anything that is not otherwise on the agenda this evening? Now is your chance. I thought not. Disclosure of ex parte communications? All right, then on to new business. Case 10-500-0002. The request approval for an extension of preliminary plat for Las Palmas. And I will open the public hearing. Staff, Steve, take it away.
Mr. Chairman and Commission members, this is an extension of approval for the Las Palmas preliminary plat. It is located between Van Buren Street and Roosevelt and between Perryville and Citrus Road. It's about 273 acres to be subdivided into 470 single-family lots and two court home parcels. The Commission saw this plat back in June of 2012, and at that meeting, the Commission extended the preliminary plat approval for six months. Since that time, the applicant has been trying to renegotiate the development agreement. Looks like a little more time is needed, so they're asking for an additional time period. That time period would take it to December 5, 2013, which is the date the current development agreement is set to expire. So the applicant would like additional time, they'd like to continue working on the development agreement, the utilities for the area, looking at final plating and construction planning, all those things they need to do. So with that is the request. With the request, staff does look at the area, look at our standards, has anything changed that would affect the approval? And looking at that, nothing significant has changed, so staff is supportive of extending the approval. With that, Mr. Chairman, staff's available for any requests. Applicant is also here for any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Does any member of the Commission have any questions or comments on this that we've seen now for the third time?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
I think I sort of chuckled when I saw the agenda in the mail the other day, because I think I had brought up the question about why six months as opposed to a year or however long, with things like you just mentioned haven't changed. And I think Joe had said that he was going to talk to whoever, council or whoever. Has that happened where, in cases like this, so we don't have to keep seeing them again? Did you get feedback from council or whoever?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Schlosser, we just, in the amendment to the subdivision regulations, we changed the original approval date, or kept the original approval date for a year with a one-year extension that can be authorized, and I believe it's directly by the city council. So I think we've seen an unusual period of development inactivity that has made this appear to be worse than it actually is. Most developers, when they get their preliminary plat approval, they want to move the final plat and proceed. And so we did lengthen the extension period and allow, and actually allow for multiple extensions, but we don't want them to go indefinitely because of potential changes in standards and the fact, too, that once we give the approvals, there is some level of commitment in terms of water resources and sewer capacity, and we don't want developers to get that and just hold it and sit on it and not use it. So we made that change along with the change to the final plats, where final plats, once they're approved, they cannot sit indefinitely. They have to go to recording within 90 days after the final plat's approved with the possibility of one 90-day extension from the city council. But, and that's especially critical, because that is the point in time where we definitely commit water resources and a portion of our assured water supply to a development. So we did make a slight change, and hopefully with development activity picking up, we won't be bothered with a lot of these in the future. We are going to see a couple more come through that had previously expired and that they're getting restarted again. So on the one hand, I don't think we'll see it. Once we get past this initial wave, I don't think we'll see it that often afterwards.
Yeah, I just, my obvious concern and the reason for my comment is for efficiencies and people wasting extra time and money and resources and isn't necessary. I understand that the reason for your policy, you don't want someone to take advantage of all that, but when it's clear that these folks need more time, you know, if we would have done that at the time and given them a year, we probably wouldn't have to be talking about it tonight. But I understand where you're coming from.
In retrospect, it might have been a good idea to have matched the expiration with the expiration of the development agreement extension. I'll have to admit, I don't know, I don't think I thought of it at the time, but, so unfortunately, we had to bring it back again tonight.
All right, thank you.
There are questions or comments?
I have one. Steve, you know, it says that you're going to have 47 acres of tot lots, basketball courts, Ramadas, picnic tables, and, you know, I do see retention basins in the area, but I don't, I guess on one of them, there's a softball field, but I don't see where any of the parks or tot lots, you know, I'm guessing they're going to be mostly in the retention areas, but they're not identified, or at least I haven't been able to find them identified on any of the attachments.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, the plat document is probably not the best for expressing what they're going to do with the open space. Like you mentioned, they have the field here, another playfield here, those are two of the major parks. This exhibit might be a little better.
And, you know, I do see the softball field and I, you know, I understand that. I guess I just want to make sure that they come through with the 47 acres of recreational area, and hopefully not all of it will be in a retention basin.
Well, that is something we look at with the landscape plans, the construction plans that do come in. We do confirm, staff does look at that, so, and we look at it based on the PAD. The PAD sets out the open space, a lot of the amenities, the plat kind of takes that forward, shows where a lot of those open spaces are. So when the construction plans come in, when they're actually going to put in the hardscape and the landscape, we look to make sure they have the tot lots, the basketball courts, softball, trails, benches, everything, Ramadas. We're looking for all that at that time. It's just at the plat stage, we don't have that, or the applicant doesn't have that fully finalized yet.
Okay, thank you.
Although it does, you know, looking at the map, it does appear that all of the green areas, at least if you look at, you know, our black and white version, are in retention basin.
Right, any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's probably worth explaining or pointing out, though, that even though they double as retention areas, the tot lots in particular have to be up and out of the retention area, portion of the retention area. The playfields typically can be subjected to periodic inundation, which obviously in Arizona is very sporadic. I know that for, for example, in my neighborhood, there's a small baseball field, and it's in a retention area, and it's, you know, it's used 90, 95% of the time, and then when it's raining, they can't use it, but nobody's out, generally, nobody's out in the rain either, so it kind of works out. So I think, I think your observation is correct, that they are doubling for retention areas, but we may try to make sure that they're suitable for the purpose that they're using them.
Good. Thank you.
Right, I don't know if the applicant has anything to add. You know, if you'd like to add anything, otherwise, sorry, no. All right, any other Commission comments, questions, concerns? Okay, then I will close the public hearing and await Commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the extension of plat, preliminary plat, case number 10-500-0002.
Second.
Heard the motion from Commissioner Miller and the second from Commissioner Short. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, you have recommended approval of case 10-500-0002. All right. Next is the report on general plan committee activities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Commission. The handout is for the second part of the presentation, so don't get scared, it'll all be explained. The first part, I just want to let you know what we've been up to. Last meeting, you were given a copy of the draft vision statement that was created, and so I just wanted to take some time to go through with you how that came about. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend last meeting, I took vacation for Thanksgiving holiday. So the first event we had for the public was, we had a booth at our GAIN Community Festival, which was held on Saturday, October 20. We've heard there was an estimated 4,000 people in attendance. We received 134 comment cards and received 155 comments. Here's a picture of our booth. We had information out about the general plan and also the parks plan and transportation plan, and then we had a big board in the back just asking people to give us their ideas for the future of the city and what needed to be included, and then people could put their ideas on cards. And so you can see people filling out their cards here, and then at the end of the night, we had a whole bunch of ideas and boxes stuffed full of cards. Then on Saturday, November 3, we held a visioning workshop. We had 42 residents in attendance, which was actually a great attendance, because we asked for their whole day on a beautiful Saturday in November in Arizona. And what they did is they created seven vision statements, and then we got an additional 180 ideas there, and we also had a survey for people who had to leave early and received additional ideas from that. We held it at Desert Edge High School in the cafeteria. The mayor and our chair, Chuck Watson, started us out, and Paul Smiley was also there to say a few words. We invited three speakers to talk to us. This is Arnum Week from the ASU School of Sustainability, who talked to us about sustainability. Rook Merritt was there from Elliott Pollock to talk to us about economy, and then Jody Ullik was there from the Arts Council of Fort Worth, Texas, to talk to us about arts and culture. Over lunch, they were available to ask questions and talk about how their topics are related. And then we split everyone into groups, and they just started writing their ideas for the vision and the future of the city. And then we had them come up and present their ideas for the groups, and then after they presented their ideas, they went back to their groups and actually created seven draft vision statements. And we gave them stickers so that at the end, they could pick which vision statement they thought was the best or best fit Goodyear. And then we also threw up all those 180 ideas that were received and gave them more stickers so they could vote on what they thought were some of the most pressing issues to identify in Goodyear. And I don't have all the comments for you, we're collecting those and sharing those with the general plan committee, but just to let you know, some of the emerging themes we've been getting from the comments is, everyone's concerned about transit, we've gotten lots of comments about light rail and the need for bus routes, and also complete streets, they want to see more bike routes and sidewalks along the streets. Understandably, everybody's worried about jobs, and they want to see us out there recruiting new types of industries and new jobs and economic development. Sustainability is a big theme out there. Arts, both public art and arts venue was a big thing we heard about. Definitely more parks facilities, we didn't hear negatives, just we want more and more and more, especially pools and aquatic centers, and then just a lot more, too, about more shopping and entertainment opportunities rather than having to go outside of Goodyear, having them here in Goodyear. So that's what we've been hearing a lot about. So then we took all this information to the general plan committee, and what they did was, they took the seven vision statements and then tried to boil them down to four vision statements, and then they took those four and boiled them down to one vision statement. And so this is just a few pictures of them at their meeting. And then, I won't read this out to you since you received it at the last meeting, but this is the vision statement that they came up with. And this is considered draft, so I can see them revising it as they go along, but it is going to help them stay on track to create the general plan. We're going to go to council on January 7 to present this information to them, so they can provide any comments they might have. And then, they were supposed to be held in January, but in February, we're going to be holding a series of open house meetings in each part of the city, one in Astoria, one in our central place, in this room, and then one at Western Sky Middle School. And so we'll also have the, along with other information, we'll have the vision up there so that the whole entire community can take a look at it and let us know what they think about that vision statement. So if anyone has any comments they want to share about it, you know, feel free to let us know or let the general plan committee know, and we'd love to hear your input about that. Just a real quick update on the parks and transportation master plans. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission has been appointed, and so they're going to oversee the creation of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And then it was decided to create a transportation subcommittee of the general plan committee to help with the transportation plan. They're not going to oversee every aspect, they're going to be giving input on key points such as truck routes, transit, bicycle routes, and those sorts of things. And they're not going to be solely made up of members of the committee, subcommittee, there can be outside people on a subcommittee, the bylaws allow that. So if anyone has a burning desire to get involved in transportation issues and wants to be part of the transportation subcommittee, shoot me an email and we can talk about your involvement. So that leads us to the big topic tonight, the land use plan. And so when we first started talking about updating the general plan, especially since we're doing it in the House, our thoughts were we would just do updates to the general plan, but this is our opportunity to make improvements to the general plan. So as I've been thinking about it and looking at what some other communities have done, I would like to propose basically overhauling the land use plan. And so I want to talk to you about that tonight, and I definitely want to get your thoughts and inputs, even if it's going to be a lot of information to take in tonight, so if you go back and think about it and want to send me comments later, or talk about it at a future meeting. But you're the board and the body that's charged with implementing the land use plan. You look at rezon cases, you use this all the time, so I think your expertise is going to be invaluable to this process and to hear your comments of what we might not be thinking about, what might go wrong or might go right, or what else we might want to be looking into. So just please keep that in mind as we go through this. So I know this is kind of basic stuff for everybody, but I think it's important to touch on again, just what the difference between a land use plan and a zoning ordinance is. And it's just that, you know, the land use plan is up at the 50,000-foot level. It's just a plan. We're supposed to be setting the highest and best use, it's general, and it's future-oriented. So even though there might be a use on the ground today, on the general plan, we might put a different use that we think is better in the future. Whereas the zoning ordinance is a regulation, as the name implies, it's an ordinance, and it regulates not just the land, but structures and buildings on the land, and it's parcel specific, and it's also present-oriented, it's what you can do today, not what you can do in the future. And so what is the purpose of the land use plan if we have a zoning ordinance? Well, one, it forwards our vision. You can think of how the land use plan might look very different if we wanted to be a bedroom community, rather than being a community that's self-supporting. It also provides for the general development patterns, and that allows us to make sure there's orderly development, that we're not putting two obnoxious uses next to each other, that it allows us to plan for future needs, so we know what our population's going to be, we can start planning for the water resources we're going to need, and allows us to plan out our infrastructure, where we're going to need to locate our fire stations and our parks. The plan does all those things for us. And then something else that was kind of pointed out to me at the last general plan committee meeting, was that it's a tool to inform our residents of what's going to happen. And specifically to Goodyear, it was pointed out to me that the last time we updated the general plan, we did maybe make it a little more detailed so that we can make sure we're giving our residents detailed information about what's going on in their area and their neighborhood. But here's what I see, as I've been observing the last few years, I've been in Goodyear six and a half years, and thinking about this land use update, this is what I observe, that might be some opportunities for improvement. And one thing is that residents want detailed information, but the general plan's supposed to be general. So if we're using our land use plan to give detailed information for the, about land use, then it might not be doing its purpose of staying general and at the 50,000-foot level. I think that sometimes, basically zoning level decisions might be getting made at the general plan stage in some cases. The level of detail throughout the plan is not necessarily consistent. I think we have some really good planning policies in our plan, but they're not highlighted. And also residential is solely defined by density, and I just want to kind of go through each of these. So just kind of a scenario, this is Yuma and Saraval. I'm right by that Fry's marketplace, and then there's the fire station that's right there, and then Wildflower Ranch is at the northeast corner. So say I decide I'm going to buy this house, I'm going to buy this lot and build myself a house, but I notice that there's this big vacant piece of land right next to me. So being a planner, I'm going to look up the general plan and find out what the future land use is going to be, and the future land use is residential. But of course, it's not residential, that's a corner piece, it's zoned commercial. And so my point is that the land use plan doesn't always tell us what a particular piece of property is going to be, because we want to know, when I'm buying a house and I want to know what's going to be built next to me, I want to know parcel-specific information, which is more zoning detail, not land use detail. And, you know, one of the things I don't realize also is that because it's not specific, that amendments can happen to the land use plan that don't require a public process. Up to 20 acres of a land use can be changed without going through the amendment process, which is why that corner doesn't show commercial, because it's only 10 acres big. But even in PADs, you can go up to 160 acres possibly without a change. So if you have an 800-acre PAD, which is not uncommon in the city of Goodyear, they can change up to 160 acres of that land use without going through any kind of approval process, except for zoning. And then my second point is that the level of detail is inconsistent. To go back to that same intersection of Saraval and Yuma, that one corner isn't showing the commercial piece that is zoned, but if you look here, and these are random areas, you can see that little bit of commercial, which is actually only four acres, that's Wiguan Commons, Indian School and Bullard, and it's shown. And this is in Astoria, there's a couple more pieces that are about five acres each that are shown. This is Rainbow Valley, five to 10 acre pieces that are shown. Again, five to 10 acre pieces that are shown. And so part of that is staff, and we've allowed some of this to happen, and there's good reasons we've allowed it to happen in some areas, but again, as a resident, if I was looking at this plan and I saw all these little pieces of commercial shown, but then I didn't see a little piece of commercial on my property, I think that would confuse me. I would, you know, think that, oh, all the little pieces of commercial are shown, so if it's not there, it's not going to be commercial. And so that, no matter what we do, that is something we'll need to address, is how we deal with consistency in the plan. Do we cut it off? If the minimum is 20 acres, then do we just not show anything smaller than 20 acres and we make that our policy? That might be one way to handle it. So that kind of goes through the first two concerns I have with our general plan. And I also want to mention that this isn't something specific to Goodyear, I don't think Goodyear's land use plan is bad, this is something I see in many land use plans throughout the valley, it's not uncommon to Goodyear. Where was I? Zoning level decisions made at general plan stage. So to go back to that, if you think back what I just showed you, that there's five-acre, 10-acre pieces of commercial shown on some of these areas, we are really getting parcel-specific. But if we look at the criteria from state statute on what we have to do for notification, we can always do more, and sometimes we do do more. But for a land use amendment, we publish notice in the paper in the legal notice section, and then we have to hold a public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission and a public hearing at council, and that's required for a minor amendment to the land use plan. Whereas a rezon or a zoning amendment, we kind of have an extra step. We have to hold a neighborhood meeting, and we invite property owners within 500 feet to attend that meeting and comment on that proposal. And so to me, what this is saying is that the state wants citizens involved during zoning. And again, I think that's because at zoning, we're talking about parcels, so that's when we're talking about a grocery store or a small piece of commercial, where we want those people who live right next to that one parcel to get involved, because that's right next to them, that's their neighborhood. Whereas when we're at the land use plan, we're at the 5,000, 50,000-foot level, where we don't necessarily need to invite people in a certain area, because we're talking very broad, very big, big ideas. So we do want to invite the public and let them know, but we're not necessarily notifying a specific neighborhood. And that was just my example, that in that little area, sorry. And finally, I wanted to, oh, the good planning policies aren't highlighted. So one thing that the chair, Chuck Watson, mentioned to me, he lives in northern subdivision neighborhood, and there's an apartment complex kind of buried back there, and they have to go through parts of the residential neighborhood to get to their multifamily development. And he was mentioning to me, you know, in the future, he'd like to see some policies and not allow that kind of thing, because it does cause some problems when so many people are driving through a single-family neighborhood to get to a multifamily development. And I was thinking about it, and I was like, you know, that makes a lot of sense, that's good planning principles, and I think that's probably something we would do now. And I was looking at our land use plan, and the dark brown areas are typically what we would think of as apartment complexes, and I'm thinking, our map kind of shows that. I'm not seeing any places where we have a future multifamily parcel off of an arterial street, so I think we're in good shape. But then I was thinking about it more, and it's not written down, though. It's just colors on the map. So a planner looking at this map 10 years from now doesn't know that good policy, because we didn't write it down, even though it's reflected in the map. So my question is, maybe we just need to make sure we're writing these things down so that it's consistent, we all remember why we colored the map the way we did. And again, there are some really good policies in our plan right now. This is just a page out of our book, and right here, this is a really good policy. The city shall extensively buffer general industrial and light industrial uses from commercial and adjacent residential. And I think we really do that, too, but I also think that maybe it shouldn't be buried in the policy and objective, but maybe it should be brought out with the land use plan and with the land use category, some of these really good policies that we've already set and created, so that it's not just the planning staff that knows they're there, but when a developer looks at our general plan, they can easily get to these and know exactly what we want and what we expect of development. And finally, I want to talk about residential density. So these are our residential categories, and you can see the main thing that differentiates them is their density. And sometimes that can be challenging, and here's, just even measuring density. And here's a little example, here's an area of a city that's 30 units per acre, but you can see there's some open space on the left, so if we took that out, it's actually 37 units per acre. And then if we measure just one little part of it, it's 70 units per acre. And this is something we run into, because we have large master plan PEDs, and the density may be one thing, if you think of someone like Astoria, but then if we look at the development just around the lakes, it might have a different density, and what did the general plan mean, which one is right? You know, which one are we shooting for? So it's just something that can be challenging with density sometimes, is how we measure it. And then, of course, density doesn't mean good development or bad development. These two pictures have similar densities, but you can see how much more open space the one on the right has, because it's townhome development rather than single-family homes on small lots. And so if what we're, you know, basically, I think what we're trying to do is, we're trying to protect lower-density development from higher-density development, and we're also trying to ensure that we have quality development. And so my question is, separating out the densities may do that, but it might not do it either. So there might be other ways we want to look at this. So just going back to, you know, what's the purpose of a land use So just going back to, you know, what's the purpose of a land use plan? I'd kind of rephrase that and say, well, what is it that we want to achieve? And I think we definitely do want to forward a vision. And we do want the ability to plan for our future needs and infrastructure, we can do it, but I think the third one is kind of the kicker. We want to inform residents, but my question is, is the land use plan the right tool? Or do we have other tools that we don't need a land use plan that's so detailed, but we can find other ways to make sure our residents are informed of what's going on? You know, just anecdotally, when I bought my house in Phoenix, I'm a professional planner, and I've never looked at Phoenix's general plan. I didn't open it at all. I called the planning department and asked the planner what was going on, because I knew that was the best way to get information, and he would tell me timing and exactly what was proposed. And I'm surprised how little calls that our planning department get like that, but we do every once in a while. So like I said, even I wouldn't use a general plan to find out what was going on in a vacant parcel necessarily. And then of course, as I said, I think the other two things we want to achieve is we want to protect residential uses from those higher intensity uses, and then we also want to ensure quality development. So going to your sheets, you can see you have our land use plan. I've looked for some examples, and there's a couple examples from the valley of what I would like to propose doing. And the first one you have before you is Casa Grande. And they recently updated their plan in 2009. They had a detailed land use plan similar to ours, and now you can see they boiled it down to seven land use categories. And the big thing they're doing there is they have this category called neighborhoods. And you don't have the text of the general plan before you today, but what they've done is they've said, well, what is a neighborhood? A neighborhood includes houses, but it also includes schools and parks and a neighborhood commercial center on the corner, and there's apartment complexes and single-family homes, but it's not the general plan's job to decide where those detailed things are. It's the general plan's job just to say, there's neighborhoods and they're here. But they're going to leave it...and they've included good policies in their general plan to say, you know, commercial's appropriate at the intersection of arterials. And, you know, multifamily housing should have access to a collector in arterial street and should have additional open space if it's buffering it between single-family, if it's going to be located near a single-family. And, you know, it doesn't matter exactly what their policies are, because we can create our own, but the, like I said, the policy that they're kind of creating here is just this idea that the general plan should be at a very, very high level. And the second one I gave you is Chandler. And they have a very similar, they call it residential, but you can even read the text under the residential, and it specifically says commercial can be appropriate in a residential. And then something else you'll see they've done is they've created a lot of overlays. So you can see, they decided to kind of show commercial, but they show it as more of a bubble, and it's hashed. So it might be commercial, it might be residential. It's appropriate at this arterial, but we're not going to show you exactly where the parcel is, just know it's kind of there. And during zoning, we'll decide exactly what the acreage is, depending on how development happened around it. And then they've also done a big circle around Price Road even, because even in their industrial, they decided to say that, you know, there's industrial development, but Price Road is a special place, and we don't want distribution centers and heavy manufacturing on Price Road. We want to make sure that that stays more office and higher-end industrial. So, you know, there's opportunities like that, too. Casa Grande and Chandler both have these high-level general plans, but you can see they've kind of taken two little ways of doing it, and that's just a blow-up of the text where you can see. And you can even see that in the commercial unemployment, there might be housing that's appropriate. There might be times when someone's building an office development where there might be a apartment complex that's built and designed in an appropriate way that fits in that district. And so the general plan allows that. And I think the biggest thing their general plans do is it offers flexibility, and it offers flexibility to the developer, so that they don't have a square where it's exactly like this, where they can move it around a little bit, but it gives Planning and Zoning Commission and Council the flexibility to not be held to those colors on the map either, to if someone's proposing something that's not appropriate, to look to those policies that we've written and say, that's not appropriate, we're going to deny this zoning request. The color on the map doesn't rule you. And I think the biggest plus, too, is that is taking...I'm all for processes and additional processes if they help and they create value, but I do think that sometimes taking some of these minor amendments through the amendment process just adds an extra process. And I think many of you at the seat here have been in zoning meetings where someone has said, you know, I don't know what's...I didn't know that that was going to be commercial. And we say, well, did you see the general plan map? And they say, well, it's a general plan, I have no idea what you're talking about. And, you know, it's easy for us to say, well, it's the residents' responsibility to know what that is, but as a planner, I'm sitting here thinking, well, maybe, maybe we aren't...maybe the general plan's not working in that way, and so maybe it does make sense to keep some of these smaller decisions in the zoning hearing process when we invite residents and have better notification. I do see some potential challenges, though. I mean, one, just implementing a change. I mean, it'll take a lot of work with our residential community and the development community to implement such a change. I also think one of the biggest things is going to be creating good policies to deal with density. And talking to my counterparts at Chandler and Casa Grande, all the...they both really like their general plans and think they're working for them. Chandler's had theirs for quite a while, I think over 15 years, and is really happy how it's worked for them. But he said, if anything has gone bad, it's been when they're trying to deal with density and it's, you know, an apartment complex wants to locate somewhere, and they...the general plan policies say, no, it shouldn't locate there, but then there's maybe some pressure to allow it there, and that's where some of their challenges have come from. So that'll be a big one on how do we create density policies. And then obviously, the third one is if we do kind of take away the detail from the land use plan, it's figuring out how do we get this information to our residents? And making sure they have it, they know where to get it, and not just our residents, but realtors and developers. Again, how many times have we heard, but my realtor told me, insert. So we need to make sure we're getting...working with them and getting them the right information, too, so they can share that. So that's my presentation. Just to give you the process a little bit, again, I'm going to be going to work session with council on the 7th. Our next meeting is January 8th, and we think at that meeting, we're going to be actually talking with the General Plan Committee about what the land use categories for us would be, and we're going to have them going through an exercise. And so I can bring that back to you at your January 16th meeting and let you know how that next general plan meeting goes. On January 17th, we're having our quarterly development advisory forum, and so we're going to have a big conversation with the development community about this and get their thoughts and ideas and opinions. I have already been meeting with some of our major landowners to talk to them about this, though, to make sure they're comfortable in what they think, and so far, it's been positive feedback. And then in February, we have those open house meetings, and then that'll be another time to vet this. And then we're going to discuss land use again at General Plan Committee in March. So my thought was, and March is kind of really when we make the decision, when we have...by that time, I'll be able to basically create a draft Goodyear plan under this new model, and we can hold it up to our current land use plan and really analyze which one would work better for us, and which one do we want to move forward with, and we'll have gone to the community and vetted it a little bit. So that ends my presentation. And I know I've just thrown a lot of information at you. I do, like I said, I want to hear your concerns, I want to hear your comments. If you do need time to think about it and want to send me an email after the meeting or talk about it at your January meeting, I'd be happy to do that. I'm finished.
Okay, you can take a deep breath now. Does anyone have any thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I just...my thought is actually a compliment, and I really appreciate all the work you've put into this, and, you know, I know we're still early on in it, and I'm really impressed with some of the thought processes that you've come up with, and I really like the direction that you're taking it.
I totally agree. You did a fantastic job, and I'm really happy that we're going to try to address or pass on information that a resident could understand and not have to come and sit and say, well, I was told X, where there are places that they will actually get real information. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, that's the...since I've been serving on this commission, that's the finest presentation I've seen so far, it was excellent. I have about 10 million thoughts in my head based on what you said.
I want to hear them all.
Not tonight, yeah.
Yeah, I think...
With that being said, I guess a couple of things that just...I need to think about this, I think it's very exciting, the 50,000-foot plan to go more general on the general plan. I guess from my standpoint as a real estate land broker and looking at this stuff every day, and also having served on the city of Phoenix Levine Village, and hearing both sides, hearing the developer and hearing the residents saying, I didn't know that was going to be built there, but from the landowner's standpoint, back in 98 or 99, the city of Phoenix created the Levine Village, and they did what was called a Southwest Growth Study. And they did more, the fine detailed stuff. So when a developer came to town, they knew exactly what they were dealing with. And I don't know that it's good or bad or indifferent, I'm excited about hearing about all this stuff. But I guess my thought is, having been to way more meetings on this than I ever dreamed of or wanted to go to, that I can just see lots of different questions. And also, having come from this Levine Village, where when it was originally set up, the councilman for the district basically appointed the village at the time, the commission, and it was stacked more in favor of the landowner pro-growth. And this city, and I mentioned this at the breakfast the other day, this city is much more pro-growth. I mean, I'm amazed at even the residential density categories. But I guess my initial thought when you said more the neighborhood category, that that would also depend, you mentioned a staffer 10 years from now. It depends who the next crew is in here, is the commission and the council, that without having more of it being defined, I could see a more no-growth wave coming in, saying, you know, we think neighborhood is five-acre lots, for instance. Or we have a more pro-growth, saying, we want nothing but high-rises. So I don't know, it was just my initial, initial thought there, so. I don't know, it's exciting. So I'll shut up now.
I have some thoughts of my own. A lot of this is about branding or your message, you know, and harken back to when I first got on the commission, where we had certain standards and lot sizes, and then, you know, the boom, we're doing more than we, you know, and then there was a rush to get everybody in, and then pretty soon the message is, we need to have smaller lots, more affordable things, and, you know, so it's all about the messaging. So I just, I worry that, you know, we may end up doing all of this work, which is great, and believe me, I appreciate what, you know, the amount of work and what you've put together, but I just worry about that we do it and we just flip the switch, and we're going to be in the same position in 10 years from now. Well, we need more detail because we don't know what's going in here or what's going in there, you know, and I know that serving on the General Plan Commission, the last time, we tried to be as, you know, it's that mix of, well, we...here's what we think, and, you know, and maybe there should have been greater care, especially on the major arterials, you know, about commercial lots, because, you know, I think that's the general assumption, is that there's going to be some sort of a commercial activity on there, and it's not all going to be just homes, and maybe that's something that we need to look forward to, is to, you know, just sort of block out, you know, the four corners of, you know, major intersections, just as a general rule. It's most likely that, that we're going to have some commercial activity, doesn't guarantee it, there still should, you know, there could be multifamily residential, there's...and honestly, there could be, you know, just normal, you know, single-family lots and such there. You know, there is a risk to being too general, and, you know, because we still would like to create a, at least in my estimation, a vision, a, you know, some sort of a plan, you know, for the city for the next 10 years of what we would like to see, what we expect. And, you know, hopefully, we can, you know, use what we have now and build on that to whatever we decide, or whatever the new commission decides, you know, to do, that it just, that it takes into consideration sort of the work and the foundation that we've developed over the last, you know, 20 years or so, and can sort of build on that success, because, you know, obviously, I think the city's been, you know, pretty darn successful, you know, and hopefully, our reputation reflects that, obviously, economies aside. But, you know, I'd hate for us to sort of lose that. All right, I threw a million things right back at you.
No, no, I guess, you know, if you don't mind me responding, I mean, that's, I mean, to kind of respond to both of your comments, I mean, one thing about the general plan is it is supposed to be this long-range plan, it is supposed to be hard to amend it. And so it is supposed to kind of...it's supposed to be the residents' vision, so no matter if you have a high-growth or a no-growth council, they still got to adhere to the general plan, and they've got to make decisions that adhere to the general plan, but the general plans, you know, at this level, they, you know, council and this body gets to make decisions down here and shape, you know, timing and exactly what happens. So that, I guess that's what my hope is, is to get the general plan back to that level if it may have fallen down. And partly because, you know, in the time this general plan, this current general plan's been active, I'm sure the General Plan Committee could never have expected that we would go through our by-far highest-growth period immediately followed by our lowest-growth period. So we had these two major changes, and you're right, we had developers coming in, changing plans constantly. Tonight, it's happening more, because they don't know what's going, you know, they don't know what the future's going to hold. And so, you know, my thought was, some of those decisions don't need to go back to the general plan for guidance. Some of those decisions can go...there's still a public process, it still comes before this board, it still goes to the citizens, it just happens once in the zoning process, rather than going through the general plan process and the zoning process, both, which I think can sometimes cause confusion when there's two processes or you're making a decision at the general plan process before you get the citizens involved. So that, that's my major concern, is trying to make it streamlined in a way that gets the citizens involved at the beginning. So those are my hopes, anyway, but best of late plans.
Right, thank you, Katie.
As I said, please, if, you know, you go home and think of more comments, like I said, I definitely need to hear them, so I can address them.
Staff communications. Joe, you have anything else for the Good of the Order?
Good of the Order, Mr. Chairman, I talked to you briefly, to some of you before the meeting, so I just want to reiterate, four of you have appointments that are coming due, terms coming due on January 31st. Not gotten instructions from this council subcommittee about when they're going to entertain applications and move forward with that, but we'll be sure to notify you, except for the chairman, who's ineligible for reappointment, about when that process is starting. So it hasn't started yet, so haven't missed anything. And I'd like to remind you that if, for some reason, the appointments are not made by the January 31st end of term, you continue to sit in your position until you're reappointed or not replaced. So please, plan on coming to the meetings if you don't hear otherwise. Hopefully, we'll know something before then, but that's just in case. Secondly, I did want to let you know that the zoning ordinance changes, subdivision regulation changes made through the city council at their December 10th meeting, they have a 30-day period before they're in effect. We'll be getting new copies out to you so that you'll have fresh versions of what we passed as soon as...that'll happen in January, probably right before your next meeting. Then I did want to remind you that we are expecting to have two cases come up on the January 16th meeting. One, I highlighted them briefly in the transmittal memo, one is the McDonald's drive-through window use permit in Astoria at Mountain Ranch Marketplace, and the second one is a... And the second one is a P A D rezone for the Saraval Business Crossings Business Park for a large distribution center. So that, both of those are scheduled to come forward. And then lastly, I wanted to mention that you might be interested in knowing that Harvey Kraus has taken a position with the city of Eloy, and so his last day will be January fourth, so we're gonna have some cake and punch for him on the, the January third, from three to four in the afternoon, if you'd care to stop by and we'll wish him well. Thank you, that's all I had.
I, I actually have a question as related to the McDonald's, that maybe you could find this out, I don't know if you know this. Is the, the high school up there, do they have an open or closed campus? I just, you know, I, I, I am just curious to the, you know, legion of, you know, teenage drivers that may want, if their thing is open, to the, the impact that that may have. But just, you know, my initial thoughts may be something that, you know, could look into. All right, anything else? Then we are adjourned.